Turn my volume off. I'm sorry, you did. For now, and I won't turn. Yeah, you did. Sorry. Good. Okay. Welcome. Today is October 3rd, 2023. Welcome to the Planning Board of Adjustment for Woodfin, for the town of Woodfin. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll take role first. Ms. Gosnell.
Here.
Mr. Jerome.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. Overbeck.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Hanson is absent, and Mr. Bennett is here. Moving on to the agenda, just to make a couple of things. First of all, I would ask that everybody please turn your cell phone volumes off. I forgot to say that last month, and we had an issue. We're going to make sure that we ask that everybody who's speaking gets sworn in and come up to the podium and speak from the podium so we can hear you and see you. And we are going to make a minor change to the agenda. Which actually should help you guys. We're going to switch E and F, which is unfinished business and new business. Do we need to have a motion for the, to do that?
I would, just for the record.
Do we have a motion to switch?
I make a motion that we move item E to below item F.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. And a little background, it's because we have a conflict with one of the members, and we would like to get moved up quicker, so. Let's see. Do I have, can I get them, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? On the board? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
My second.
All right, everybody in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is, I guess that is a vote for the, that actually is the approval?
Yeah.
If we do it that way? Okay.
Yeah.
Just trying to think, we're voting on the motion or doing it, so, okay. Sorry, it's been a long day. Public comment. Everyone wishing to address the board must sign up with the town clerk 15 minutes prior to the meeting. Do we have any signups?
We didn't have anybody sign up. Don't have any public comment.
Okay. And we'll close section D, we'll move on to F, new business. Evidentiary public hearings. So I have.
I don't, I don't think we, do we vote to approve the minutes?
I don't know if I called that part.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I apologize.
I was just making sure.
Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve said minutes?
Second.
Or a second?
My second.
Okay. Everyone in favor approving the minutes from September 5th, 2023?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous approval. My apologies, thank you.
All right, and so you want to go ahead and swear everybody in for both hearing, public hearings now, so provide testimony?
Yes, I'm, let me.
All right.
Sorry. My little cheats, no, it's okay. We are now, we will now open the evidentiary hearing to hear the request for a special use permit. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. Witnesses must swear or affirm their testimony. So all persons wishing to speak and testify in this case, please come forward and raise your right hand. So if anybody is testifying, would you please come up with Ricky, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we'll swear into it, just to provide some room so everybody can all together, while it's kind of crowded up.
And Ricky, we can swear you in at the same time?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody, do you solemnly swear to swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth shall help you God?
I do. I do.
Okay. While, this is a question I might ask Ricky and Marie. Should we have them introduce themselves with names as they come up, or should we do it in blanket in the beginning? Marie, is it easier?
Just as they.
Okay. Okay, you can please have a seat then, I guess we're good right now?
That way, if somebody happens not to speak, or gets sworn in, it's okay, because it may be moot, later in the record, but.
Parties to this case are entitled to an impartial board. A board member may not participate in this hearing if he or she has any fixed opinion about the matter, financial interest in the outcome of this matter, or close relationship with the affected person. Does any board member have any, partially, any partiality to disclose and recuse to offer?
Yeah.
Good, okay. I would also like to ask any board members who have any information or special knowledge about the case that may not come out in the hearing tonight, please describe that information for the record, so we have any, any interested parties will know and can respond. Do we have any of that on the board tonight? Okay. Marie, we have to do the legal standing part of it? This is not the appeal, so. Still have to do it?
Yeah.
That was what I was going to ask.
Yeah, I think it's good to work through what Michael, the chair, was going through, because it could be candidate, somebody had, was not impartial, and they might have to sit down, and then you would stay.
Okay.
So it was good to let you go through, just in case somebody had to disclose that, and we had to excuse somebody, then you would stay up there.
You're the alternate?
Yes, the alternate, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six. So we just need five on the board?
Just need five for quasi judicial. Mr. Young is, fills in if somebody is either disqualified or absent.
Okay. And you can maybe all stick around for the rest of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, we can ask them to sit down.
Yeah, he can just have a seat in the audience.
Just for this, please. Standing determination. In order to act as a party in this case, an individual must have legal standing. The applicant, property owner, and local government have standing. Other individuals may have standing if they will suffer special damages. If you wish to act as a party, please provide evidence to establish that you will suffer special damages, damages from the requested development. In this case, we don't have any.
There's no other parties present besides the two applicants that we have.
Okay, so then we're good on this case. Now Ricky, the planning director, will introduce this hearing. Please confirm that you were sworn in. We did start you in. We're good, you're up.
All right. We're finally got there. Thanks to Ms. Biddick for getting that updated script for you. I know you've been asking for that, and she's super awesome at those things. Thank you. What?
We might tweak it a bit at this point.
Yeah, we might tweak it, but that's okay. It's, it's better than what we had last time bubbling through. Anyway, so we do have a special use permit. As we normally said, it's evidentiary, so it's quasi judicial. So this one, you may recall, we've had a hearing or two about battery storage facilities in town. This is a second location for Duke Energy at 727 Olivet Road, which is on the west bank of the river, as I refer to it. It's a 30.5 megawatt storage facility, so it's a little bit larger than what we've seen over the past last month. So if you'll look here, you see the rivers, the, the light blue line to the right, the purples are 43 residential, the gold color are 10 residential. The light, empty area tan to the left is Buncombe County Open Use, so it's just a general residential, light, very light, mixed of uses west of Olivet Road. That parcel there that you're looking in the hatch is about 52 acres. It's fairly large tract of land. Here's an aerial photo. We were very fortunate since the last meeting to get some 2023 aerial photography that got uploaded to the county. Our subject parcel is in the blue box, and you can kind of see that there's a mixture of houses and open lands all around this area. It's just a real kind of rural transitioning to suburban as you move north to south. So out of the petitioner's packet, I have kind of a zoomed in site plan. The existing substations there to the north, and you can see there's a couple houses to the bottom or south of the site. The blues are hard to pick up on the resolution here, but that, I believe that is the actual battery enclosure, what's listed. And then they identified the red areas, or red boxes, as inverters. The yellow line is the perimeter fencing. And it's real kind of hard to make out, but there is a green stippling. You should be able to see that in your packet. I think Marie may have provided you all a couple hard copies of the packet if you need to see that there. Yeah.
Craggy batteries, is that?
Craggy batteries.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do we have one set? Yeah.
I can, I can see.
Okay, I just want to make sure y'all can see that.
I can too.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody, it's, there's a little glare on my side, I want to make sure you see it. And the multiple red lines to the right, that's the transmission lines to the substation. I just provide their exhibit two, which is kind of the prototypical what the battery system looks like. I think it's a nice example of what you would see.
Do you want to see this in order?
They provide this fact sheet. Sorry about the resolution, I kind of snipped it from a PDF, but it just shows you kind of how this fits in on the 52 acres. The yellow box is the area of the battery storage, immediately south of the substation proper. The orange line is the 52 acre property boundary.
What's the distance between the, the orange line, or the, really kind of edge of those trees, and then the inside of the yellow fence, or, or I guess the yellow fence? Do we know what that is?
I'll have to look.
I see actually, one dimension there, it says 45 on that one point. Is that measuring the distance to the house?
Not to the house, to the property line?
To the property line. Yeah, okay.
I think that's 45 feet in length there.
Yeah.
It shows the battery storage is 27 feet from the fence. Looks like that buffer yard's about 45 feet. They showed a minimum of 20. I'll look, I'm trying to remember, I believe I told Jay, it was about 100, it was over 100 feet from the battery storage to the, I can look at some notes here in just a second and tell you.
And Ricky, before you move on that slide real quick?
Yeah.
The green speckled area, you called it, below the property, what was that?
That's the required vegetative buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a, what's the requirement on, in between?
They have to have at least 20 feet between the use and the property line. They can always provide more on that.
So have we communicated at all with the residents there, you know, somewhat close to this?
Yeah, we have sent out the notification letters, and I believe you'll see in the packet, and I believe the applicant's prepared to tell you about their outreach that they done. What I've seen in the packet was probably on par or better than we've seen on some conditional zonings that we've seen lately. So I think they've done a pretty thorough, what I've seen, seemed like a very thorough engagement of the neighbors. Again, back to this slide, just so you, give you an approximation. This is a site, obviously I can't enter the site here, it's a restricted area, but this is at Olivet Road looking into the substation. I'm right at the entrance, so this is kind of looking east toward the substation in the distance. Going down here. This is directly across from the entrance, or, this is in the county, the, the house is in the county, but there are residential uses. And then looking to the south, you see another home in the substation, or power lines leading in and out of the facility. I would take a picture north, but to the north was trees. Couldn't see anything. Just remember that you have six findings that you have to review in approving a special use permit. And with that, I will move over and let the applicant testify about any evidence. Bob, are you going to lead off with them?
I'm going to start.
Okay. And I do have your full board packet, I can bring that up if you want me to.
So I won't pick it, but Ms. Bennett can put her phone.
Okay.
Before you switch off that?
Yeah.
The, the pictures that you just showed, and then the, this here, do you have a picture? Like where does it show, or where are you at when you're on that road looking to the south? Where, what position on this view are you up?
I'm, we're on the driveway a little bit. That's in that kind of northwest corner up here. So if you look at the upper.
That point at the upper left?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. So then looking from the south there, the place that it's going to be is in that group of trees there, and looking to the south, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah. Group of trees, that kind of like, conifers, the bright green, that big block, that's where it's at. That's, when you move back here and kind of see it, there's a relationship. You see the driveway more clearly.
And you're up there at that driveway.
Yeah. That, that's, it's so wooded, and it's fenced in, so obviously I can't go in there and take pictures in and out of the site without somebody from Duke.
And one other question, it's hard to tell from here, but maybe some of the other pictures, the space that's to the north of that yellow rectangle that's, that's grass inside that cleared area? Is there anything on that space, or was that looked at for, for this battery?
That, that'll be something you'll want to ask them if, if there's a way to move the battery facility closer to the substations.
Yeah, I just need to know what's on that spot there.
Yeah, that, that'll be.
To the right of the yellow box? Straight up to the north of it.
He's talking about the little triangle, the wedge in between the battery storage facility in yellow and the existing cleared substation.
The, this one. This there, that box there.
Right.
Right there.
Within the substation, the existing substation, okay.
Okay, we'll answer all your questions.
So the applicant will now, do you agree with your question answered?
Yeah.
Okay. The applicant will now present evidence and legal arguments in support of the request. As a reminder, any evidence and arguments must focus upon applicable standards. If there are attorneys, or, do you have an attorney? Or?
Other representatives who will give a general summary of the client's position, we would like you to go first. Before you begin, please state your name for the record, address, and relationship to the case once you get up to the podium, so.
Ready for me?
Yes. So if you would, please state your name, address, and relationship to the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bob Oost, I'm with the Asheville Law Firm of McGuire, Wood, and Bissett. I'm here representing Duke, Duke Energy Progress. With me are Jennifer Bennett, who is the, the Government Community Relations Manager for the region, and, and Jay McMullen is a Business Development Manager. And we'll be, and we will, y'all had some good questions, we'll be glad to answer all of them. These folks are better positioned than I am to, to answer those questions. But first of all, we're glad to be back here again at the Woodfin Board of Adjustment. We had a similar project last month down Riverside Drive, and, and this is, this is on the other side of the river, as Mr. Hurley noted. I want to thank Mr. Hurley, first of all, for his thorough presentation and staff report, always makes our job easier. This is a pretty straightforward special use permit request. It's a battery energy storage system, or BES is the acronym, on, on a large tract, 52 acres in size, it's already zoned light industrial, and, and is occupied by, by an existing substation. And Mr. McMullen and Ms. Bennett can tell you where the, where the apparatus is, and as we are, the setback that Mr. Hurley was talking about is, is, is 20 feet between the apparatus and the property line, and, and we can show you how we meet that. Woodfin zoning ordinance like classifies this facility as a utility, and, and Duke Energy needs a special use permit in order to, to, to cite this battery facility. In order to get a special use permit, we need, we need to meet a series of general and specific criteria. I'm not going to read those to you, because you all consider them every month, and, and I will if you want to, but they're, but you're, you're well familiar with them. The general standards apply to all special use permits, and then there are some specific standards that apply only to utilities. We think we, in fact, we do meet all of them. I'll call on our witnesses. Ms. Bennett will talk about how this project fits into Duke's overall plan, and, and how it satisfies the general public interest and, and public welfare. Mr. McMullen, who prepared the application, will, will go over the project in some detail, and how it meets some of those other standards. And I'll wrap up briefly, and we'll try to answer any questions. So that concludes what I want to open with, and with that, I will call on, on Ms. Bennett, and, and she'll be followed by Mr. McMullen. I'm not going to ask her questions, I figure you all would rather hear from her than from me, so, but if you have any questions, please be sure and ask her.
Absolutely, and I'll be brief, and I think, did we have a PowerPoint presentation that was on the, I don't know if that's me, and if not, we can talk through it.
I doubt colleagues.
Yeah, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, I just have.
No worries.
Ms. Bennett, while he's looking for that, can you, for the record, can you please state your name, address, and relationship to the case?
Absolutely. Jennifer Bennett, I'm the Government Community Relations Manager for Duke Energy. My office address is 555 Brevard Road in Asheville, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's okay if not.
That's fine.
We can do it by.
Thank you.
Okay.
Clearly wasn't using Duke Energy.
So I don't have a PowerPoint.
Absolutely, we'll just put one up here just for reference, if that's okay. If it's okay, we'll talk from the paperwork, and then if we need to go back and review, we'll find it on the screen. Excellent. So I just wanted to give a quick project overview, and then talk specifically to the engagement efforts that we've done related to the craggy, craggy project. So I'm talking from the project overview slide in your packet, and just as we talked about with, with the previous project that we were here for, this project helps us to exceed the commitments that were made in the Western Carolina Modernization Plan. And so in that plan, we had about five megawatts of solar, or I'm sorry, 15 megawatts of solar, and five of battery storage. We've met that through existing projects, and we continue to exceed that with projects that are in the works. And this project is really important to reliability and grid resiliency, and so it helps us to support the power demand there in the area, and, and really ensure that we are able to provide that power. We provide cleaner, reliable energy for that region, and that helps us to meet our broader energy goals of providing that system wide. So Jay is going to speak to a lot of the project specifics, the construction, the implementation, as well as the management of the project. I wanted to specifically talk about the public outreach efforts that we've done on this project. We have several neighbors that are within 100 feet of the property, and we mailed postcards to 26 neighbors that are within 100 feet of that parcel boundary. We have a specific field engagement project team assigned to this project, and it's the same project team that's doing the engagement for our craggy transmission project that's happening there on the same site. So they have already engaged with a number of these neighbors on that project. They reengaged specifically about the battery project implementation and, and impacts. So we had 11 in-person meetings with neighbors that are immediately adjacent to this project, and they were provided resources on the project. You have a copy of the engagement plan and document in your packet. They were provided overview information of this specific project, as well as general information about battery storage projects in general. And so we did have some feedback for that. In general, the questions revolved around an existing property boundary line, the size of the project, the location, and safety protocols. And so the information that you're provided in the packet, that they were also provided, addressed a number of those questions. We'll continue to stay engaged with them, they have phone numbers, they have email addresses, and they have a website that they can go to for additional information, and we'll continue the engagement efforts as this project moves forward. So I, I believe that addresses that, unless there's any questions about the engagement specifically? Yes, sir?
Yeah, were the neighbors given the opportunity to come and speak tonight if they had any objections?
Yeah, we, we posted a sign on the side, and we've mailed notifications out, and we've not heard any calls or concerns.
Okay.
Would, would you say that the conversations with the neighbors in person, that they generally just wanted information, or did you have anybody throwing up their hands and screaming at you?
Right. The way our engagement specialists covered it was that, really, they wanted information. They had questions, like I said, about property boundary lines, about battery storage in general, safety, how we manage it, items like that. We had, we offered to have continued conversations with a number of neighbors, one in particular that we've reached out to for additional phone conversations and, and put that on the table. So like I said, we continue those engagement efforts, and we invite continued conversation if they have additional questions or come up with questions that they'd like to discuss.
Any other questions, Mr. Naval? Okay. Next.
I'm Jay McMullen, I'm the applicant. Jay McMullen, the applicant, on behalf of Duke Energy, representing 727 Olivet, and really want to take this opportunity to thank you for your time this evening, and to go over some of the technical aspects for this project. I'm sure that you guys have some questions, and I'm hoping that I can answer all of those for you. One of the questions I heard earlier specifically was looking into, were we able to shift the plan? So that's one of theirs, I'm going to start. And going to scroll down, and hopefully your eyes are, are able to focus on this. But if you look at this area here, when we look at the northern area across, next to the fence line, there's a lot of topography that drops down. And as we start looking at shifting it towards the substation, that's really what drove us to where we're at right now, is really the, the topography for the site. When we're looking at coming in to develop this, one of the things that we're looking at is how can we best develop this site with minimal impacts while taking advantage of the existing topography? And so when we're looking at the sighting, that is exactly why this particular site ended up where it did for this. Also, we'd spoken about our efforts with community engagement, and with that, looking at, there are two residential structures which are to the southern border of our property line. The existing vegetative buffer requirements, 10 feet. We've committed on this one to a minimum of 20 feet. With that, we'd like to do more where possible, as represented in this document, but what we're looking at is doing a minimum of 20 feet. We'd love to work with staff to better understand how that works, whether the preference is a natural buffer, or just coming back in with a landscape buffer that meets their requirements, both with, you know, opacity and visual screening for that. Additionally, across the front, along the right of way, we have more vegetative buffers across the front. As shown in kind of the illustrative for that, what we're wanting to do is to make sure this is really harmonious with the nature of this area, and that it's, isn't something that just kind of jumps out to you. We really want to be good neighbors to everyone within our community. When we're looking at this project, we're also looking at how we can best use, as I mentioned, we cited based on the topography. That's also something, when we're moving forward with this, we would be working with our civil engineer consultants to make sure that we minimize our grading, our stormwater management approach, which, after that, we would be working with the town through the permitting to make sure that is sufficiently addressed. When we're looking at this site from impacts to the community, it is zoned light industrial, but while we're looking at this, once it's in commercial operation, it would have virtually no traffic coming to it. This is something where it's not going to be manned. However, we will have operational plans in place. I'm sure earlier, when you're looking at the other one, they went through and went over kind of the safety measures, but just for anyone who wasn't there, this is something we pride ourselves on. When we develop these sites, we're not just moving forward with any batteries, we're using the best of the best out there. Safety is important, everyone here, it's just as important to us. This is something that we take pride in when we develop these sites, and with that, we do have active management plans in place, both for responding to fire, where these do have fire suppression inside, but we also have routine trainings, and we work with the local fire department to make sure that everyone involved is adequately trained and knows how to respond to these. Another question that we've often been asked with this is from neighbors, well, what is it sounding like? Is it going to be this loud noise? No, it's not. These are relatively quiet, and this battery is a two-hour battery, so that doesn't mean that it's going to be running all day long for this. And so those are just some of the considerations that we have for this particular site, and as Jennifer mentioned as well, we have reached out to the community. We welcome their feedback, we welcome their suggestions, we truly want this to be the best project that it can be. And so that's a lot of the technical aspects, some of the questions that we have for that. So I'd love to just open the floor to answer any questions that the board has. Yes, sir?
This project, or this battery system, is identical to the one we approved the other month?
So I'm not able to speak to.
Except for being larger?
It would be a larger one, but when we're looking at safety measures, they're going to be the same. We have a uniform stance across the board, and safety is paramount to us, so we're taking the exact same approaches for that.
But the unit itself is identical to the--
So the actual batteries?
Yeah.
We'll be looking at using vendors for those, we'll be using the same vendors for those.
The yellow line on this drawing, is that going to be your fence line, the perimeter fence line?
That is our fence line, that's what we're looking at doing. I really hope this gives you kind of a good idea of where we're locating this and the security measure that we're going to have in place.
So a question for Ricky, I guess it's a zone light industrial, there's no restrictions on impervious services including the property?
I mean, it's still going to be the normal 50%, but if there are grading over an acre, stormwater will apply to the project. And so we've sent preliminary comments to the applicant about stormwater.
Okay.
Because I think it's close to a two acres worth of grading, one and a half, two acres, but it's triggering the, it will trigger a stormwater permit review when we get the detailed plans in.
But they're not limited as to how much?
No, no.
So they're not going to trigger any problems?
No, there's nowhere near that as far as impervious area and it's a 52-acre tract, so a large portion is already wooded.
Okay.
I have a couple of technical questions, so--
Okay, I'll do my best to answer this for you.
So this is, the Craggy upgrade, you're going from what, 115 KV to 230 KV? That's what I think you said they were doing last year?
And I have not been involved full transparency with the transmission upgrades.
Okay. So is this battery bank feeding the transmission circuits or the distribution circuits? I'm assuming distribution?
So this will be connecting into the substation and this is intended to be transmission-based?
I guess my question is, is the output from this battery bank a 13 KV or 230 KV? I guess it's 13 KV.
I can go back there and pull that to get into this--
I'm just curious if you knew.
So really, when we're looking at those, outside of the use, we'll be working with our team of electrical engineers to make sure that--
Okay.
--those connections are where they should be.
And since you're putting in a separate fenced-in area, or I'm just assuming you have, you're going to tie in, would that be done overhead or underground?
Uh, overhead for those.
So you'll have an overhead tie between the two stations?
That is what our intent is.
Okay.
Yes. That could change based on when we have civil engineers, once they're brought on to it, but yes, that is typically how we do run those, is with overhead utilities.
Not trying to trick you, because I have 33 years' experience of substation--
Yeah, I would be fully transparent with you.
That's what I did for a living, so I'm just curious what we're doing here to know why.
Yeah, one of the opportunities with this site that's attractive is the existing infrastructure that is there. This does really help facilitate our means of point of interconnection for this.
I had our questions to, kind of back to what you were asking before on that, that space within the yellow is approximately two acres, right?
Yes.
And it looks like it's all non-graded wooded for the most part currently? So that, and it seems like the batteries are kind of situated to fit in there into two main banks, right, of the inverter components?
That's correct.
So I'm still hung up on, you know, it looks to me like you could at least save half that space if you put half that on the existing plane above. And then I know you have a bunch of grade down lower, but is there a reason that you can't have that into two?
So really, our next step after this, as long as everyone feels comfortable with this and recommends moving forward, we will be engaging a civil engineer. And that's exactly what they're going to be doing. Our goal is to minimize impacts and that's one way through with grading with that. So there is an opportunity to change how we grade the site, that's something that we will definitely look at moving forward with. I think part of the challenge with this, when we're looking at it with the topographies, how do you work with that to make sure that you bring forward the best design possible with the least amount of impacts? Yes?
Do you have to add any additional vegetation to protect the homeowners on the south end?
So the vegetation on the south end, that is something that when we move forward, we will be actively engaged with the town on. And so right now, there is existing vegetation there. And what we would work with the town to understand is existing vegetation through, we'll say, tree safe, something that we would like to use for that, or would it be better to come back through with vegetation evergreen screening with that? I mean, sometimes when we look at aerials, it can misrepresent what the existing vegetation looks like and oftentimes it's better to come back and replant so you truly have the visual screening that's intended.
Okay. And does all the electricity that you're going to store, is that coming from the grid?
It is, yes. So a lot of what we'll be doing is we'll be storing this during off-peak times, really when the use is low for that, the load demand. And we'll be storing it there for times when it's most needed by the system.
And it goes to all the surrounding facilities that, that so uses the power?
So it would really depend on how it's dispatched, right? So a lot of the lines go in many different directions, so I can't say 100% it's specifically going this area, it's really going where the load demand is most needed.
Okay. How far can it go? Can it go very south to Asheville or--
So, well, everything in the eastern interconnect is interconnected, right? So we are connected all the way to areas in Chicago, but there's means in place, right? We have different balancing authorities, different meters going between them for interchanges. But with that, so to speak, I mean, it's going to take, go the shortest distance to where the load demand is, so we don't have losses.
Any other questions? Okay, since we don't have any other questions--
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
That's right.
If we can answer the questions you had about the southern part of the existing facility, Ms. Bennet and I were out there the other day. And since I'm the lawyer, I need to get her to testify about the fact. Can you come up and tell what you saw?
Yeah.
Need to come to the microphone.
Absolutely, it's Jennifer Bennet. I can't speak to what the infrastructure is that's located in that area, but I would say that a large portion of that, while it looks like it's open, I don't know that it's all open and free and clear, if that makes sense, and just sitting as vacant property. I think that we would need to speak to exactly what infrastructure is located there. I think in this image, it looks like it's open space, but there's consistently activity going on in that area.
There were workers and apparatus in that area.
That's right. There were workers and apparatus there in that area the other day when we were on site, two weeks ago, I believe.
Right.
Right.
Completely before last.
The biggest benefit you get out of it, if you can't move it, is moving away from those two homes to be further away.
So you're referring to the area that's with inside the fence with the substation? We don't have the opportunity to use that. That's based on nerve compliance, we're not able to put our energy storage within that fence line.
Not that close.
So we have to stay outside of the existing fence and we're citing ours. But that helps. What I missed on your question, I thought you were talking about the kind of just south of the substation, or we can slide it further. And those were totally favorable constraints.
Right, yeah, no, I was referring to that area inside the--
So when they do that, when they develop those out, they develop those specifically for the substation. And also, what you're not seeing is likely future expansion plans tied to the substation. So when they have those areas designated, it might be open now, but they very much have intentions in the future of expanding as the growth in the area comes.
You don't have any other possibilities of expansion there with storage batteries? That would be it?
This is what we're looking at specifically here, yes. And if you were to kind of go back through and look at your packet of the topography, it's general, this is it, where we're looking.
The facility that's on the river, the other battery site that is attached with an existing substation, they had it both places where they were going to put it. One, it was, they had it on the north side and then we moved it to the south side.
But it's still outside--
It was still outside of that.
They're still putting it outside the existing fence?
Oh, okay, I thought part of-- I thought it was moved in just another section of it.
But our only area going with inside the fence is to make the physical connection to the substation, have a point of interconnection.
Right, okay.
Do you know how far that substation will be from the one that we approved over on, I forgot the name of the road?
Montersoga.
On Riverside?
On the other--
Cross the river--
Cross the river on the other side?
Cross the river and up.
Other than the distance between the two sites and facilities?
I think we'd have to look at the mileage of it to give you an exact by the road.
If a catastrophic event happened there, it wouldn't impact the other one, is I guess what I'm trying to get to. Good.
These are two separate structures and really the way that they are connected is through our transmission lines and their relays. So as soon as there's an issue, the relay pops open so that they don't impact any of the elements. Similar to if you have a line, tree fall on a line near your house, the relays will pop open to isolate that segment of the system as the fall.
So I guess, would you like to give your closing statement, please?
I'll be brief, first of all, to make sure--
Ms. Bennet, sorry.
I'll be brief, first want to make sure that all the exhibits, the staff report, our application, the PowerPoint that you all have a hard copy of are admitted into evidence. Any objection to that? Thank you, members of the board. We think the evidence, including the testimony, exhibits, and response to the good questions you all have asked, show that this project complies with or will comply with all of the standards, general and specific, for a special use permit for a utility facility at this location. And there was no evidence to the contrary. So we ask that you approve the special use permit and I'll be glad to answer any questions or if you'll have any more for these witnesses, we can bring them up again.
Good.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. I guess Ricky, so we're going to call you back in again?
Sure.
And we have our normal review of--
Yeah, so me and Marie was chatting back forth there quietly. It's about 2.6 road miles from this substation to substation. I think it's a crow flies, I was, what, about 3,400 feet was about? But that's across the river, so. But that has nothing to do with power line interconnections, that could be something a lot shorter, a lot longer. I have nothing, no knowledge about electrical infrastructure.
Answer my question.
They answered, okay, good, you're happy.
To make sure that one going crazy couldn't affect the other one going crazy.
It's not supposed to. I'll put it that way, it's not supposed to.
Not supposed to.
Is there any other questions for staff on this? Well, typically, you have a little review with our--
Suggested motion.
--requirements. Well, we actually have that, I believe, we have the suggested order.
No, that's the order from last--
Oh. Thank you.
That got approved with the minutes.
So do we have a suggested one for tonight?
Let me get back over--
There was earlier--
Go back to the power.
The criteria you're talking about.
So here's the findings, yeah, I've got the findings on the screen for you. Remember, there are six.
There are six, yeah.
And I can move to the next screen when you've read through those.
All right, so I guess we can read through all these things. When unnecessary hardships would result from carrying out the strict letter of the zoning regulation, the Board of Adjustment may vary any of the provisions of the zoning regulations upon showing all, of all the following, all four findings must be satisfied.
Should be six, I'm sorry.
Okay, A, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. My personal opinion, and see if we have any questions on this, is they have testified that we meet that standard. Do you have any questions or objections to that on board? B, special uses will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within neighborhood. I agree, they meet that. Do we have any concerns on that one? Letter C, the establishment of the special use will be in harmony with or compatible with the neighbors and is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. Since they're building, we're saying expansion of the existing substation, I believe there should be no question in that matter, they do meet all that. Is it, do we have any concerns on this letter?
If we did, I think we have neighbors here.
Right.
D, adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided, they did testify to that, you should know any problems? E, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress to designed as to minimize traffic congestions in the public streets. From what I heard, from my experience, they're going to have some construction traffic, but once it's done, they have a weekly inspection and unless they're working there and maintaining it, it's not. So I believe that they have met that requirement. Do we have any concerns on that requirement? And F, the special use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located. And I'm going to ask Ricky's opinion that I believe that is correct?
We did not find, don't find anything that's out of compliance with the special use standards.
Okay.
There'll be a detailed review to be completed later.
Any questions from the board on that? Are there any other questions or concerns about this matter from the board at all? Are we, since we have met all the requirements, do I have, can I have a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit requested by Duke Energy as it withholds all six of the criteria that we have outlined in the Town of Woodfin Code of Ordinances.
Second. Okay. And including the fact that we met all those information?
Yeah, all six. I didn't repeat though.
No, you don't, that's fine. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This motion is approved unanimously?
All right. All right, so the order will get approved at their next meeting when they total minutes, so we'll have, it'll be about 30 days on that one. Yeah. Those want to pick up the special use permit for the order for the other one, so Mr. Bennet, if you have a moment, the sign, the other--
Didn't I sign it last? Oh, that was the one we, previous. So the one that I was trying to look at is the one I'm supposed to be signing today.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, the page numbers, how long does that matter? I don't want any technical issues. Okay. No, I'm fine with it, it's--
Yeah.
Okay, it's fine. And this is, as of today, the third-- I think there's only three, right? I just don't want--
Was it number four? Yeah.
Your contact information here anywhere?
I don't know, but I'm happy to get it to you.
Yeah, that's fine, I just have questions, I would like to--
Absolutely.
--know more person answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was a very good, for instance, presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That takes us to number two.
Yep.
Ricky Robinson, on behalf of the property owner of RV Tree LLC, requesting to extend a special use permit pursuant to Section 54-40 of the Town of Woodfin Code of Ordinances for the development-- For the development of a four, development of four detached short-term rentals at 455 and 9999 Weaverville Road identified in the Bunkin County tax record that pins 9731-67-0591 and 9731-67-5206.
This was approved previously by the planning board, that, so you guys may not recognize it. So really, they're asking to extend what was previously approved. But the issue that I think we have to discuss is the fact that we keep approving new zoning, and maybe Ricky's going to say this, new zoning rules like for trees and short-term rentals and that, and whether an extension is what we want to grant considering that, or whether we want to put some limitations on the extension.
Let's hear Ricky's, because there are a lot of good questions.
But yes, Ms. Everbeck's correct, this is a request to extend the validity of an SUP that was done by a couple board iterations ago. I believe she's correct, it was the, was it Planning Board, Planning Zoning Board of Adjustment?
Planning Board, yeah.
Planning Board. And so special use permits are good for two years on the initial term. This one was done in October of 2021. That is rolling up quickly, here we are in October. I believe that date, that meeting was October 14th.
How many years was it approved for? I don't remember.
It was two years, so--
Two years, so it's absolutely going to exist.
Yeah, so--
Okay.
Yeah, so absent a request for a three, four, or five, you can always approve something for up to five years, but somebody has to request that. But so our SUPs for two-year initial term, and so it has to come back before this board to ask for an extension. And if you're familiar with the area, Weaverville Road is the upper left here, and it climbs up the mountain to the right-hand or to the east, almost in this lower right-hand corner, which is almost the top of the mountain there at Serenity, so.
Do we have any wider?
Yeah, I'm going to move on to an aerial photo.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I have no idea where this actually is.
Yeah, this is actually behind.
We live on the opposite side of the town, so I know very well.
So again, so this is a recent aerial photo, as you can see, again, the former like racetrack, little amusement area that's on, next to Weaverville Road in the 1923, you see is the far left under the word aerial, that's now Saltface Mule. That's on the far left.
Had touched Leisureville, Leisure Road?
Leisure Mountain, no, it's, Leisure Mountain's in the upper right here, in the far right. You see some houses there, that's Leisure Mountain, that comes beside of Ingalls. That's the road on the far right. What's immediately in front of the property is Mr. Robinson's paint business. That's the large metal business, it's a large metal building there immediately to the, like, 11 o'clock position. And then you see the daycare center, I think it's Child Care Network, that's that large-looking residential structure immediately to the west. So it's kind of tucked up in there. And then that's another large apartment complex immediately to the north. Mr. Robinson's RV Tree LLC owns additional properties immediately to the north, one's kind of a L or boot-shaped, and then a rectangle there identified as 3507. And also the triangle here to the lower right is also his property. In the very bottom right-hand corner, that is the treehouses of Serenity. We had done a CZ on back early in the beginning of 2023. That's that property, bottom right-hand corner. You barely see like some Mystic Moon Trail, but this bottom right is the, I'll point here.
The bottom right of the trees is kind of like the treehouse here, so the top of the mountain.
There's little houses right here.
Like right here.
Yeah.
That's like the top of the mountain.
Just, just trying to orientate everybody. You can't, you can't visibly see this property, you don't really see this property, there's no way to drive really up into it from Weaverville Road, there's no way to actually see what's, how it lays or anything about it without going on it. Mr. Robinson did take, myself, and I think maybe a couple, other couple people up that are not obviously volunteers on this board, up just kind of see the property a bit more to give a better idea of how it lays and some of the...
So the staff hasn't taken a position on the request?
No, I'm just presenting the facts on it. I think there's some certain considerations to keep in mind as we work through.
Where would access, oh, okay. Now, you just go, you just answer my question.
Yeah. So this is the original exhibit from the 2021 hearing. So again, the red, it's real crudely, the red, that is the parcels in question. You see kind of in blue, that is the driveway access that connects back down to the main driveway access for Mr. Robinson's Paint Company and to the Child Care Network driveway at Weaverville Road. It's real light, and I'll point to it as well. Right here's the driveway connects back down to Weaverville Road right here. I'll step up here for you.
Right.
Right in here, there's the paint facility and then the daycare.
Do we know how many units were built previously? Because I mean, I, it was a very clever development, I remember that.
Yep.
But I am...
Nothing has been constructed yet.
Nothing.
No, so this, what was shown at the board was four short-term rental units. I think he had desires for a larger complex, but the site plan presented to the board at the time was for four units. And I think that's what the request is, just to extend that validity of those four.
Maybe this isn't the same one I'm thinking of.
So I, I agree. So everybody on this side of the board has never heard of this before, so we're, I'm a little confused. So what is shown was previously approved?
Correct. That's what we have, the special use permit that's valid today is for four, these four units in this configuration.
It's valid through October this year.
They're just asking to extend it.
This is going to expire if we don't extend it?
Correct.
So this isn't the one, you know, there's been so many developments like this proposed. This isn't the one that had naming them after Star Wars and all the...
No, no, no.
Okay.
No.
It's a totally, maybe I don't remember it then.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's, Serenity's got some different type structures up there that had different things, but that got a conditional zoning back at the beginning of this year.
Was that that recent, okay.
Yeah, at the end of the year, on the very top of the mountain. Again, the three, that was before the board got reconstituted. Honestly, Marie or myself have not seen this layout until Mr. Robinson approached us about moving forward with a grading permit, but it was in a slightly different configuration. So that's when we realized that Mr. Robinson's SUP, as of today, for the group development, it's a group development, because it's two or more buildings, that's how it was actually permitted, it was a group development for two or more principal buildings on a tract of land over two acres. So it was approved as a group development, and at that time, short-term rental was allowed.
Right.
And...
And community shopping, yeah.
And community shopping, still allowed in community shopping, except today, you're limited to one short-term rental.
Four.
To, in the town. So right now, you can only develop one and own one in the town of Woodfin. This SUP predates that standard. So he has got a vested, kind of a vesting or a right that predates our current ordinances. And it also predates, I would say this, it predates the steep slope standards as well, because this development was permitted in 2021, steep slope came in 2021.
And it's definitely steep slope.
Absolutely steep slope. Right where you see the road make that right-hand turn and turn southeast, basically, the entire property is steep slope, I would say that.
What's the elevation up where the four units are?
I can look real quick. It climbs quickly, I mean, we're probably at 23, 50, 2,400 feet, but I'll, I'll look really quick and double-check that number. But 2,200 feet, right where you see 0.57, you're already at 2,200.
Yeah, you're hitting all this point here, I'm sorry. Right in here is about 2,200 feet, right in here.
Okay.
As soon as you come into the tract, 2,200 feet cuts in right here, and it just climbs.
Is it wooded? I mean, is it heavily wooded?
It's wooded, yes ma'am. It is heavily wooded, tract of land, at least, the very top of the mountain's been cleared in the past, prior to, and that wasn't Mr. Robinson's, but that's at the very top, not part of the SUP.
So this plan was approved under the previous...
Yeah, I can't, now, this is not the one I remember it was.
Yeah, this, this plan was approved pre or before steep slope and before our current short-term rental standards.
But it's about to expire.
About to expire. If it is...
And didn't do the building.
Yeah.
And zero construction, zero excavation, nothing is started. And we have someone to testify, because I...
Yeah, Mr. Robinson's here, I was just trying to give you a little bit of background.
That's fine. And I guess I have a, okay.
Because Marie and myself, we, staff has had to kind of catch up on this project because there's nobody, I think, Adrian just arrived as well.
If it was to expire, I'm going to ask this question.
Yeah.
What changes, so he couldn't build four, he can only build one?
Correct. He cannot, he can only own one short-term rental, yes.
He could build four, he just could only use one as a short-term rental.
Yeah.
Okay, he could be, build four.
Yeah. And actually, actually, long-term, single-family uses are not allowed in community shopping. You'd have to get a rezoning in community shopping too, because single-family and multifamily are not allowed uses in CS.
So if it was to expire, he could build one short-term rental and one, if he wanted to live in one, that would be it?
He could build, he could build a, one short-term rental, that would be, he'd be limited to one short-term rental, he would also be subject to all the steep slope standards.
That was my next question, about the vegetation and all, so that all would be included, okay.
And that would, I think based on that slope and how it climbs, it would probably have some great impacts on the property.
Has he, has he indicated why he hasn't started construction?
Yeah, yeah.
We're all waiting to ask the same question, so.
And I think Mr. Robinson's here to provide some answers on that.
Okay.
But, but just trying to give you a little bit of background, what, you know, myself, we've discovered, really it's been the past six weeks that we, we kind of found all this out, it's been since mid-August, and it's been kind of, I think, called, Marie and myself, we were unaware of this project, and I think Mr. Robinson too, it's why we tried to get on this board cycle for this meeting, you know, we worked with applicant to get him on this agenda, because he really technically missed the deadline, but we know it's kind of urgent to have some sort of hearing.
That's what I was going to ask, when was the application actually submitted?
We actually had it submitted like the week after the deadline, it was actually the week of Labor Day, but we had pretty much straightforward, had a lot of conversations, there wasn't a lot of way of review, because everything, this is basically, there's existing SUP, and this is more of a question, is the board, if it hears this request, is it willing to extend the validity for another period of time? He's requested, I think we've got down two years, I have in the staff report, it could be a lesser time than two years, and I'll say this, the board is also, I say not, or can say it, not obligated to extend the SUP either. You could let the original approval run, and it could expire as it normally would, but that's kind of the choice the board can be, either we give 24 months, you can pick six, you can pick 12, additional time.
And that time limit, is that to they break ground or to they complete, to get their annual inspections?
It's typically get the next phase of like development approvals. So most people, naturally, you'll get a vesting or approval, you move on with applying for road control, stormwater plan, sometimes people will actually purchase property, but in no case it means you have a CO. It does not mean they have to have a CO.
Okay, so that time limit, they would not have to have the CO within that time limit?
No.
And...
There just has to be some progression of things.
Yeah. Okay. And what other approvals will they need from the township? They have not received any other approvals from the township?
No, we, no, there's not been anything.
Okay.
From us, we would, since there's not been anything filed to date, we would take a stormwater permit, since we actually have stormwater permitting now, we would take that, and based on what this looks like, it would need more than likely a grading permit from Buncombe County, because it appears to exceed, I would guess at least an acre of grading on this. If you've got a half acre there, and then the houses, I would say you'd need at least a grading permit.
So no permits, construction permits haven't even been issued yet?
No, you would have to have the site development, and typically, no, we have not issued any zoning permits on this one so far.
What about water? Water applied for?
I'll have to, we'll have to ask Mr. Robinson on that. I know that he's done some initial engineering work about obtaining water and obtaining sewer. That's, he has made provision for that, I don't know if he has his allocations and stuff for that.
But he ain't actually gone to either water district?
Well, I'll let you ask him that, unfortunately, I don't know that answer, he would know that.
All right, I guess, Mr. Robinson, would you like to please come up and give us your presentation, please?
Yeah, that's right.
Just, just respect your name, and then if you need to...
Okay. My name's Rick Robinson, I live at 236 Wind Whisperer, Ivan Woodfin. My shop is here, where you see the metal building, paint contractor. And we started this quite a while back. My wife and I sold a rental property in South Carolina. We purchased the property, the two, or there's actually three different lots there that you're looking at. We purchased that property, and then we started doing the engineering on this, and I don't know if y'all know how engineers are, but it's been, it's been trying, to say the least. We actually didn't get started, I didn't close on the property until a little after five months after we had this SUP agree, SUP from the town of Woodfin. And then the engineering has taken a long time. We, right where the houses are, we run into a problem with a big retaining wall. And I'm not sure, Ricky, how much I can talk about the other drawings that we're brought in and actually when y'all found out.
I think you, I mean, you're welcome to tell them what, where you've run into, I think, if you're, but I, I mean, it's your case, you're welcome to talk about what you've run into, what you've been trying to develop, and, I mean, there's not a limit, but clearly, what they're supposed to be hearing about is the actual...
Right.
This what we have before us.
Right, I'm just trying to explain why it's taking so long.
Yeah. You can explain what the rationale for it has taken so long.
Yeah. Our engineering ran into a problem with the retaining wall where these four houses are, and we drew another drawing, I didn't know it was a problem coming up in different direction on my other property, and he spent a long time, we've had stormwater, erosion controls been approved, stormwater hasn't been approved, but it's been disallowed twice, and I don't know if y'all know how Buncombe County is with that, it takes a long time to get it run through. We've spent on the property $375,000. We have paid for that, we do have approval from Woodfin Water of tying into the main water supply up where they're building the 20 houses, which is, I guess, on this map, it's south. We do have approval from that property owner to have a water main that we were going to run down to these cabins. It is in Buncombe County for, or MSD for the sewer, so we have been working on it, I've spent $60,000 with engineer, I've spent money with architects, already developed three of the cabins for me, and we just, we just run out of time. I wish that I wasn't here, I wish we had some of this done, but...
So for us, we don't know. So you keep using the word cabin, are these single-family homes? Are they considered single-family homes?
Well, they were going to be treehouses and cabins. We were going to build A-frame and treehouses.
You were?
Well, yeah.
Are you, that's still your plan?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. When you said were, I thought maybe you changed whole process, and that's what I'm asking. So you're not changing anything from the existing approval?
That's correct. Well, we're, we are trying to take the road a different route because of that retaining wall, and we haven't gone a different route, we don't have to build a big retaining wall. But we haven't brought it in yet for approval for the board, and we have to go about that, and, you know, it's all taken a lot of time.
So you're talking about moving the houses from...
The houses would be real close to where they are, but we're, what we're talking about doing, I also own this other, can I come around?
Yes, please do.
Yeah, please, please. There's nobody, Kenny, do you want to come up so you can see better where he's pointing, are you okay? Okay.
Okay. This is my shop. I own this, I don't think you can see it there, there's a little house right over here, I own it, I rented out to A. Pet's Rental.
Yeah.
There's a driveway that goes up to this house, which I tore down quite a few years ago, the folks that used to live there. We were going to come up this, which both of these are my property, we were going to come up through here to get to, instead of coming over to daycare and coming around this way, and that is the drawings that we brought in, we got in the county, we've done everything, and I just realized that I had to draw this to get it approved. I'm not, I'm not that smart.
It doesn't sound like it's for lack of trying, but he's running out of time.
No, I agree. So Ricky, you're...
Adding that in.
Well, a quick question before you leave, so are we allowed, if he's going to change the road, and if he's going to bring it in on a different property, that is different than what's been approved, and that would not be what's before us tonight? I'm just, I don't want to get in any trouble, so I want to make sure we're doing this right. If he's keeping it relatively, he's going to move it a little bit left, a little bit right, okay, we can do some wiggle room, I don't have any objections or concerns with that. But if he does change the whole plan, and comes to the road through a totally different property, then that changes the whole plan, doesn't it?
Yeah, that is correct. So that, that's what kind of flagged for Marie and I, is when we saw the plans for road control and the road layout, it come through those two parcels to the north that we were talking about. It's a total different layout, and he's, he's spent some energy, they didn't realize that when you change, he was basically bound to this layout, like, this is the layout that he, he can use. You know, you can wiggle around a little bit, you could tweak the position of the cabins, but the layout was totally different. It come up, kind of where you see that water line that comes through from the north...
he's, he's spent some energy. They, they didn't realize that when you change, he was basically bound to this layout. Like, this is the layout that he, he can use. You know, you can wiggle around a little bit. You could tweak the position of the cabins, but the layout was totally different. It, it come up kind of where you see that water line that comes through from the northwest, southeast running. That's where the road was coming up. And it also had more cabins on it. And so, because it wasn't the approved SUP, I cannot stamp a town zoning release for that so that Buncombe County can release permits for them. I mean, you could submit a erosion control plan, but, so that, that's kind of where we kind of run into the, the, the rub was the fact that there was a plan that was being presented to staff that didn't match this SUP.
Right, yeah.
So, the short of it is, is that i- if he were to get this revalidated, he, he could try to pursue the grading and the four STR units as they are. If he's looking to do a significant modification to that, anything involving these two other parcels, it's going to have some other different approval and start, it would basically be a new application to start over. So, that said, this board could not approve four STRs in it. So, you, we wouldn't be able to bring him back to group development.
And steep slope would apply.
And, and steep slope would apply. And the amount of grading that was also envisioned would probably exceed what's allowed in that area too. So, it's a long way of saying that more than likely the approval body, if we want to use these other two tracks, it's going to be city council and back through here as a CZ. That's conjecture for this board. I mean, it's conjecture for tonight, but just to let you know that, that's always another option is to go through a different route. Mr. Robinson does have, we, we had a copy here of the plans. He can show the board as another exhibit and might be hard for us to show the public, but we could probably...
Yeah, but I don't know that we should entertain to review that because that's getting out of our scope.
I did have a question though. You, you said that you were looking at other routes that would make it so that you wouldn't need a, a large retaining wall. And that sounds like what the other, I, I mean, the, the, the better option, whatever it is, sounds like the right option. You know, just because it's drawn this way now, this is the worst, if this is the worst design, the better design is the better.
But he's already got the approval for short term and he won't let any changes.
Right. So, yeah, and that's the thing.
What do you really want to do?
That's the catching point.
What I, yeah, I'll let you speak, Ralph.
What I really want to do, I think, I'm really confused all about this. I didn't realize we even brought this drawing up here, but it's here and I have to stick with this drawing. If, if I could get this approved, I guess I could go back through and try to rezone to CZ. Is that right?
Conditional, yes.
Yeah. CZ, what we're wanting to do is put, can I come around and show you?
It's easier for me and you two. What I want to do is build my son and a few houses on this property right here. Bring a road up from where this road is here, tie in right there, come up here, put my treehouses here, put houses here, and then I'll be developing another business over here, just like my...
Mr. Robinson's pointing to parts to the north.
And I get everything rezoned and they're telling me that I can't keep the steep slope ordinance for these unless I get this four units extended for two more years or how long it's going to take me to get all this done. And it, it takes forever.
Yeah. Angel, Angel reads the short-term rental use for all.
So, if you want to build those houses in that, those other tracks, then you're okay with staying with the four units there, right?
Yeah, but, but it's tough. And this is another problem. When we done this before, this was on the letter, was shown zone community shopping. It's, this is residential, it's R21. And what, with changing the, changing this, this area right here is community shopping. This community shop and this R21, changing it to CZ, this would go to, you know, we could build residences on this property right here where the road's coming up. We could build the, the treehouses or cabins right here and then we could build that down. I mean, it, it lays out perfect for that.
It looks to me like the, so what, what would be the reason that we wouldn't sit down first and redraw property lines and rezone this stuff correctly instead of trying to work around stuff that's wrong?
Well, it's not, not...
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll... Yeah. I think, so we'll try to draw back in to what was...
My concern...
If you'd rather do it the other way anyway, then...
Yeah. My concern is we proved this. It's just a stopgap. It doesn't get anything because if you're going to look at the big picture, which maybe the board was not aware of at that time, this looks like a much bigger project. It's not just four treehouses. This looks like it's multiple family dwellings as well as a brand-new road and then you're only going to get one treehouse, correct?
Yeah. So, that, that's the thing. It's like, if his permit expires tonight, I would just say, the staff doesn't really feel one way or the other. Is that, it does, it sunsets completely here and, you know, either this month or next month's between when the order was actually issued. It, it delays its November. But, there's no guarantee obviously for the applicant that any CZ would be approved as well. There's no guarantee that he could get four STRs on that. I, I, I know that we got kind of caught on the CZ, wanted to try to maybe explain maybe why it got delayed a little bit on his behalf, but I'd also don't want to get confused with potential future actions that he could or could not do, which is go the CZ route because he's not obligated to the CZ at all. I mean, I'd say that, that's for another date based on Mr. Robinson's...
So, he just needs more time to see if he can make this work.
Yeah, that, that's kind of where we were at too. I'm sorry.
I'd like to be excused and have Kennedy come up since it looks like this isn't going to necessarily get to a vote. And he can be the alternate if there is a vote and listening.
I don't know if we can since he's just been listening, but we can still move forward with cause of judicial with four members. He would just, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, because you need four to actually vote on that.
All right. So, let the record know that we're going down to four, please.
Marie, maybe, maybe correct me. So, you only need four out of five?
From up here anyhow?
No, because he's an alternate.
Yeah, yeah. So, let me just double check. I think with four out of five is for variances only, correct, Marie? Is four, if it's only for variances, SUPs, those can be issued by a simple majority? I think it's the way that, yeah, yeah, she will double check. But, I believe that even with Ms. Over back here, you'd only need three out of five to grant an SUP. So, her absence would still, still be three out of four. I don't believe handicaps, Mr. Robinson, on the votes here.
I mean, my personal, I'm going to throw my opinion out here for the talk on this. I would not have, I mean, I was doing good and I was listening. Everything was going well. And I would not have an objection to possibly extending this, and I don't think two years, but for a period of time as it is approved, exactly as it's approved. But, I don't feel comfortable approving it with them going to rewrite the whole thing because that would be a whole new project in my opinion and not the same project, especially if we're going to be bringing in different lots. That is out of our...
I don't think they can re...
We can't do that.
I don't think they can rewrite the whole thing if we approve it this way. They have to continue with this.
Or they, well, he could, he could abandon this and go for all the project.
He's going to have to come back to the board to get, if he wants a road to come in with other housing, that's going to have to come back to the board for an approval on that.
I don't have a problem with giving him more time to see if he can make this work. And then if he can't, he's obviously going to have to figure out another way to make it work and then come back here anyway, it sounds like.
Yeah. I think legally, we cannot approve something that goes on to other property because we're only addressing this.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. It's always this, so we're just revalidating, yeah, so we're not rehearing it. And it's, and more for him, it's for his protection, protection is right, his vesting that he has that's running out.
It sounds like he's been diligent in trying to ma, to get to the point that he's at and needs more time to see.
So, based, okay, based on the original permit, it was for four STRs. But now, but now we're saying that he could only do more.
If, if it were to expire and we started a brand-new application today or for any other properties, it's one short-term rent of town. This right here is what he has. He has a legal right to these four right now. So, this is, this is a unique situation that we don't have that many SUPs that are running out. Either they haven't been acted or they've just expired out completely.
Is it one STR per property or per property owner?
Per entity, company, person within the town of Woodfin.
Okay.
But he got, he got his approval before that went into effect.
Yeah, so he doesn't want to lose it.
Let me ask you a question, sir. Would you be willing to forego any STRs on that property and make them long-term rentals instead?
They're not allowed.
We can't do that.
Can't do that?
That's what you just said. You can only have one long-term rental.
Oh, only...
Uh, the zoning doesn't allow long, uh, long-term rentals.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Any long, that's right. That was mentioned, no long-term rentals.
That's because of CS.
Yes.
Yeah.
But if you were to come back and get it all resuming, the news that I...
Why do we have CS on the side of the mountain?
You could do lots of different things if you had resoned.
I mean, I don't think, and this is my opinion and I don't know if the board or us agree, we could approve an extension. I don't feel comfortable going maybe two more years, but we could give some kind of a extension.
Yeah.
But as exactly written, that would give you a short, as the government says, stopgap. It can get you going for a few more months or whatever it's going to be. But, I think...
So, what...
But I think it'd give him enough time.
What does he need to do to get past this board and not have to come back to us?
Build exactly what's there.
Well, he doesn't have to, he get, he needs to get it to a permitted process, right?
Yeah, but I mean, but he would have to have it, like Ricky said, a little bit of wiggle room. We could move a little bit here or there, but he couldn't take that road and he couldn't take those houses and come in the other direction because that's, that would have to be a whole new project.
Now, I'm talking about, as it is right now existing, what does he need to do, what does he need to get to so he didn't have to come back to us for anything?
He just needs to act on the permit. So, that could be, in this configuration, file a stormwater permit, applications, file the building, excuse me, not building, grading applications for this project in this configuration would then act on the permit and then as long as he kept, you know, moving forward with the stormwater and grading applications. Typically, grading is not considered a, in and of itself, a vesting, a way of vesting a project. But, if he's filed the stormwater and/or building foundations and things like that, then that's typically how somebody moves through acting on a project.
Is that a possibility for you?
We don't know the reason why. I mean, you start to explain why you didn't want the big retaining wall. I'm assuming that's more of a financial objection than a physical objection. And we're not really supposed to be taking in financial hardships in our decisions. So, I mean, we...
Is it financial or is it even possible to do the road?
How, how do we know the feasibility of that?
It, it could have been done when the engineer draw it up, drew it up and I got it and looked at it and we had pricing on it. It was, you're not supposed to know about it. It was not official. It was a pretty big, long retaining wall. There's a valley just right above the property there and there's a house right below it as well. I'm looking to see it real quick. But that, that's one of the reasons why I think, so... I think my engineer's thoughts are try to get this SUP approved for two years, which I hope it don't leave for two years, but so we can continue to work and, and, you know, build a few houses down below like I was talking about and the other building over there.
You're talking on a totally different lot, right?
Yeah.
So, this board doesn't...
Different project.
So, different project, okay.
Yeah. If we could just get these preserved, if something happens and, and we want to get this rezoned to CZ to go up, to, to put these treehouses on there through...
But if you do that, I'm just, correct me, Ricky, if you do that, you're only going to get one treehouse?
Not if it's CZ, right?
Yeah. So, the CZ probably something city council could modify. They could modify the, the limit, just like with the serenity, they modified that, that restriction for serenity. But, again, that's a whole separate process and that's, we don't know, because it would also come back to this board for recommendation. That could be voted down. It could be. So, not, I'm sorry, not trying to talk, I, I think may, it might just be cleaner, just, I'd say ignore, not to say, I think it helps knowing that why there's a delay from that with the plan design. But outside of that, knowing that why there was a reason for delay, I think ignoring the potential of other developments or involving these parcels because it's could have, should have, would have, you know, it's conjecture, it's, it's hypothetical. We can't, we can only respond to the application, the site plan you have in front of you, which is, is, I was going to try to look at the ordinance here real quick, but it's basically like the circumstances surrounding this delay. Is there been significant changes to development patterns in the area to warrant the, to allow the extension? Has there been substantial changes in the economy? Is there something going on that's kind of hindered this development that's maybe beyond his control? And I'll, I'll try to read that real quick here.
I think it looks to me like the, the way, the way, the way for him to correctly get the units that he wants on there is to have a CZ, not CS. And to, to approve it this way makes him have, then, then he gets around having to abide by steep slope requirements, which, that's on the side of a mountain that steep slope should apply. And so, I don't see that putting an extension on a plan that, it's, it would be fine to have those units there, but they should be done correctly. And if we...
Well, they'll have to be.
And now they won't because he won't have to follow the...
Well, Ricky, let's, let's ask Ricky a question. So, if we give an extension...
He still has to follow the law.
We're trying to, we're, we're, I'm having, I think we're all having a little bit of a hiccup. We're a little bit concerned with this one thing. I don't think we want to give an extension as a placeholder to keep a grandfather. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yes, it makes sense.
I don't want to give a placeholder to grandfather somebody in just to come back with another plan a year and a half, two years, six months from now and say, okay, I still have this grandfather, but now I'm going to come up with a plan B and come in a different way, which I know he'd have to come back for a whole new project. But, is that true? If, if we extend this project and I know we're not looking at the other projects, would this be grandfathered under a change?
Okay. So, if, if y'all were to vote the extension, then the applicability of the current steep slope does not apply. So, steep slope would not apply to the, it doesn't apply to this development today. It does, and the STR limits don't apply to it as of today because its approval is anchored in October of 21.
So, we have to be built as approved in 21?
Yeah. Like, this is the 2021 approval. So, whatever grading restrictions, which were none, any short-term rental restrictions that were at the time, which were none, still are enforced on this project and it would carry forward for the additional six or 12 months you approve it. Now, if, like you said, not to run a rabbit, but if there was a different project comes in, that's a new application, it has to follow the short-term rental and the steep slope standards. And if it was a CZ, they could ask for modifications and they would probably be looking at revoking that SUP at the time.
So, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't become a hybrid. That would be null void.
Yeah. We'd be looking for that to be a...
That's my con...
Yeah.
If I'm making sense.
You can't wrap the SUP in, you can show I have a SUP for four STRs as part of that coming back here for the CZ, but, but it wouldn't be that you could combine them and say, I've got this exemption on steep slope. That's a card in my pocket. Ha ha. It's a...
Could we approve this with allowing the extension of the short-term rental, but it has to meet today's steep slope standard?
We don't have to even address that because he already grandfathered. If we extend it, if we do anything, if we extend it, he keeps everything he already has.
Yeah. There's not a...
No stipulation.
There's, there's no way to stipulate because it's just an extension. So, I'll, I'll just read out 54-40C, what it says. It's in the staff report. It says...
Thank you.
It says, dang it, "Permit period of vested right established pursuant to this article shall run for a period of two years from the effective date of the approval. Upon following the same process as required for the original approval, the decision-making board or official makes in the vesting of a site-specific vesting plan of up to three years. Upon finding that the permit has not yet expired, conditions have not changed so substantially as to warrant a new application..." as to warrant a new application. And the extension is warranted in light of all other relevant circumstances, including, but not limited to, the size and phasing of the development, the level of investment, the need for the development, economic cycles and market, excuse me, and market conditions or other considerations. So that's kind of what's subset for y'all to consider if you were going to extend it. I know it's a little bit of wording there, but it's in the staff report about the beginning of page.
So I'm, I'm, I have, I have to ask the question. Why did we wait till now? Why did you wait till now to come re-up the permit?
I didn't know we were going to have the problem we're having. My, my engineer drew a whole new road, which I have here. And I, he, maybe, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I have no idea why we, you know, I didn't know it expired on the twenty-second. Is that why? Twenty-first, twenty-second?
Uh, yes. Um, we think it's at least, at least mid.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just curious as to why we waited till the last minute. Cause if, if, if the two-year deadline was coming up, that's I guess my question, why we didn't come in a couple of months earlier and then.
I didn't know it expired.
Okay. That's fair enough. That's, we're all residents and laymen, so.
Yeah.
I'm not an attorney or an engineer, so I get it.
Cause I know what I don't like, you know, I don't like the four S T Rs. I'm, I'm not a S T R guy, cause I have to live with fourteen of them and they develop my, I'm here.
But what he's building is.
Understand that's what he's been approved. What I'd love to see is to make sure that you don't go in and just clear out all the trees and everything, that there is something there that would prohibit everything being cut down. And I don't know if that's something Ricky, if there's a way to do that or not. I mean, I could live with the proof if, if we could be assured that everything wasn't going to be stripped like a lot of these mountains are around here.
Unfortunately, where we're at is that we have an old plan that predates our current standards. And so there's no way that we can make the applicant, you know, accept anything. And we also don't have a grading plan. I mean, this is, we went through the file, there wasn't all the details that we've been seeing lately with our S U Ps. You know, we've seen the Duke plan. We've seen a little bit of the prototypical grades and potential grading layout or at least some grades and things like that. We just don't have that on this project. I have, this is what we got in the file is, uh, four boxes with a road overlaid on a flat piece of paper that doesn't, I mean, also we, we could have, we probably wouldn't run into that with the grades today. We'd be asking for more, but at short notice later, no, there's no way that we can make him accept the steep slope standards.
I would like to say that, uh, when I took you up there, Ricky, you seen right through here, there's very few trees. They're already cut down. There are trees through here. There's trees down through here, you know, to about riding here, as you can see on the house. There's a few, I've, I've already tore this trailer that was here then, and then the grading, and there's a few trees there, but not a lot. So there's not a lot of trees right there, uh, right when we went up there.
Yeah. Well, I guess.
So there's not, there's not a tremendous amount of trees that would be cut down to do the project?
No, no. I think what the, these are, there's, it's wooded, but all of us, the mountains, the highly visible part is, is already been kind of cleared. Grown back up to, it's like two or three years worth of growth on the upper part of the mountain that you kind of see, but.
It wouldn't be in the problem from an erosion standpoint?
Uh, well, there's erosion control. State law requires that you keep your soil on site. Uh, I mean, there could always be a five-inch storm in an hour and cause erosion control problems. But I mean, you, you have to, he'll have to have a permit. I, I'd say that he'd have to have a permit based on this plan. If I had to estimate it, it would be at least an acre, acre and a half of disturbance. And he'd have to have a grading permit approved by the county, uh, with, correct, erosion control. Now, again, that's grading, probably going to exceed our limits for this parcel. That's fifteen percent of four point four three would be what you'd be allowed. The existing half acres probably pushing that already just from prior development. Uh, but the four point four three, I'd say you hit or exceed.
On the old standards?
Uh, on the current standard.
On the new.
On the new, on the new, cause we don't have any standards for this.
If he was to move forward with the existing plan.
Yeah. And I don't.
He would still have to go get the proper permits and approvals.
Need a grading permit, cause you still need a grading permit. That's required. The state has.
May not actually happen.
He, he may not.
That's a possibility.
Yeah. He would have to have the grading permit. That's state law's been since the seventies.
Okay.
Erosion control in the seventies, we've had, uh, grading permits in the state of Oklahoma for acre or larger. And Buckham County does it here for acre or larger.
So I see we only have really two options. Either we do not extend the thing. Or in my opinion, we have to pick a timeframe. We extend it and it has to be built exactly as the original plan was.
Correct.
Pretty close, yeah.
That's, that's pretty much your two, yeah, I'd say that's pretty much what you're down to. And, uh, Mr. Robson's.
And he can always withdraw his application, correct, in the future if he doesn't want?
He could. He could always turn this S U P back into this board. Uh, he could always turn that in as part of a C Z application, things like that. So, but that's.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant? To make it, do we have any?
And Ms. Biggs.
In my opinion, there's not enough to, to go on on a plan like that to, to go and just extend it. I think that the, the steep slope requirements that we put in place now are, are there for a reason. So that they, they have to navigate that slope properly. Not that we, not that it can't be navigated and that you can't put four buildings on that. But the, you know, the road maybe should come from another direction so that to not cut up and need a big retaining wall or whatever it might be. We don't, we don't know what that is.
I mean.
But to.
The applicant's had two years to start. And I guess that's the sticking point I have that we haven't, and I understand, I heard all the information and things are slow. And I know stormwater management from the county is really slow. I get that, but that actually should change now, correct? Cause that's in-house now. Um, it's, I mean, we can't take in the financial hardships. We can't look at that, correct? That's not within our things. I, I, I personally, I would not, definitely would not want to grant two-year extension. Right? If it hasn't been built within the first two years to start it and hasn't got any permits yet, I wouldn't want to go two years. So the question is, would the board be agreeable to give it a shorter term or do we just feel we? The other argument, and I'm going to throw the argument out there, just kind of like Larry said, or what was mentioned is we've gone past this. Do we grandfather this or no? Cause this does not meet our current standards. And we have the right to do that, correct?
I mean, I kind of wonder if we extended, if he's, if it's not going to work now, why, why will it work then?
How many more of these situations would we have out there in the county that could happen?
Well, going forward, they can't because anybody coming in now goes by the new standards.
Unless they got an S U P already.
I think Ricky said there aren't any.
Uh, well, we don't, we haven't had anybody else come up, but there's, you know, there's a couple of S R Ps.
Possibility of having others.
I, I can't say, cause me and Maria have not been through every file. Honestly, this one, if Mr. Robson had not come in in August, we wouldn't have known about it. And he may have showed up in December and we'd have been like.
Sorry.
Unfortunately, it's already expired. Uh, well, it's, but, but.
Is, is there a way to, if we approve this, to say this is it? There's nothing else that can be?
No, no, it's, it's only, it's only for this application. So if something got approved in January of twenty twenty-two, that's an S U P, uh, I mean, Duke Power could come back and request an extension on one of theirs. So each individual one, but yeah. We did confirm it's simple majority vote on S U P, so that.
Personally having a hard time with the extension. Based upon the applicant's testimony that he doesn't believe that it's going to work in the first place.
It's like, well, I prolong.
Yeah.
And when you don't really think it's going to happen this way.
If, if he, for whatever reason, if he couldn't afford to do it or if he couldn't do it, if he doesn't want to do it that way. I mean, and if, if it wasn't for the fact that all of our ordinance have changed, if this was keeping in with the current standards, I would say, okay, fine. That would be easier to handle. But since this goes against everything that we currently have in our current standards, I'm having a hard time wanting to approve the extension.
If, if we, if we didn't approve the extension and it, it lapsed, would you come back in for, and, and another permit for this exact same project?
To be honest with you, I don't know what I'd do. I mean, I've been around with engineers and with the town and with, with getting things permitted, permitted to work on our will, permitted, I'm almost frustrated.
I feel bad that it's been so much trouble for you, that it's that difficult to do. It looks like kind of a simple project.
I appreciate that. We did that. You know, my wife and I were going to retire and my sons were going to take over with us. And we didn't know that this was going to be such a problem. You know, we had the S U P. I didn't even know what was required. You know, our S U P doesn't say four. Our S U P doesn't give an amount. And our request doesn't say four, but evidently my engineership just overshot where the road was going in. This was before I bought the property. After I bought the property, and I went to the kids. So, you know, they had, Ricky had made a suggestion to my engineer that maybe what we could do is come up this other route, which he drew the drawing with the road coming up the other way to get to this without the, uh, uh, big retaining wall. And my engineer said, well, we need to preserve our four S U Ps. And so that's why I'm here is to preserve our four S U Ps.
But this, the, the four S U Ps will not be preserved if you come.
That'll be a whole new project. If they approve that, but if they don't approve that, then I would have to come up this route and try to build them in there and do the best I can with the container. Or otherwise the property, I shouldn't even have bought it and sold my condo and planned on retiring. I can't do anything.
I know, but that, that's not what's before us today.
Well, right.
Here we are, not even supposed to know about that stuff like that. So, I mean, the only thing I could say is if someone would like to make a motion to approve extending the current application. My gut feeling is just saying six months long, because that way he'll know whether to get his foot in the door and get something going or no, I can't do this and we're not going to do it. If we get, I don't, I'm not a, I'm not favored for doing two years. We're already beyond, everything's changed, so I don't think that, if we want to give him a six month, and he could always come back in again.
But I think he needs, he should have an opportunity to, to make, if he can, a little short time.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Six months, six months should be enough to be able to at least get permits and get started. And that would trigger working, correct, Ricky?
Yeah. I mean, if, if it were to be extended, then Mr. Robson could start applying for stormwater permits with us or, um, a road layout, things like that.
I mean, in your opinion, do you think six months is enough time for him to get?
I, I don't know his engineer schedule.
Um, things, yeah, true.
Yeah, I don't know that. But I mean, I think that we could get something started. Um, I don't know. He's done a lot of it. They got a different plan that's not going to be for him.
But is your preference to, to build, like you're saying, your son's house and, and some of the other things that are going to come up that route and build that way anyway?
Back pocket. I got it. I mean, I'm, I'm just being realistic. Um.
But issue at hand.
Yeah. So, I mean, I mean, if someone would like to make an emotion to approve it as planned in the past, or if someone likes to make a motion that we do not approve it, either way, however you want to do it. But I don't think, I, I would not be favoring two years. Um.
I would, I would make a motion that we don't approve it. Based on there, the, if you look at the reasons to extend it, I don't think that there's really sufficient reason to. Some of the economic hardship about doing it this way are really what's precluded, precluded him from doing it this way. So to continue to allow that same plan, I don't think it's, you know, there's, if they would, if, if they would have been able to do it, then they, then they would have done it. So now we're, now we're extending something that.
We're, we're sitting here having to deal with the forefathers of the past.
Yes. And we are, do we prove something that doesn't meet our current standards? That's, that's the hiccup.
But he was approved for it by that group of people.
Yeah.
Right. But the, what the, the reasons to extend it, you know, the.
Ricky, do we have a list of those five, those six rules? Do we need that to extend it or that's already?
He read off the extension reasons earlier.
That was the extension reasons. I mean, I've got the, I can scroll back to the findings, but that was normally the findings that you do to grant an S U P.
Right. But you had read earlier the.
I, I read, and that's on the beginning of the second page of your packet.
Do we have that?
Yeah, if I need to bring it up on the screen, I can.
Yeah, do you have, I don't think we have. Do you have it on the?
I think, yeah, I can bring it up real quick.
This department says the applicant must show that the use salt will not adversely affect the health. Oh, you're bringing some different, yeah?
Right here is what I've read.
Conditions have not changed so substantially.
So relevant circumstances is, does say the level of investment, which is what the money he's already put out, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
I make a motion that he, we give him a one-year extension to try to get, uh, all the permitting requirements done and give him the opportunity to, to build those units. Although I am in objection to four S T Rs, I must say, but I'm willing to, because we are, we're, we're, we're dealing with the past sins of our forefathers. Okay?
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve a one-year extension of the current S U P as written.
Correct.
Without modification, without major modifications. That's correct?
Yeah, as, as the site plan showed, yeah.
And the development wouldn't need to follow steep slope requirements then?
It would not have to, it's not required to.
So based upon that and based upon this, I'm going to call, roll for the vote. Not just one hands. So we're good with the motion? Any questions on the motion?
No.
Okay. Um, since you made the thing, Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Not there. Ms. Gosnell?
Yes.
Mr. Derone?
No.
And Mr. Bennett, I will vote yes. So that's a three to one. Is that?
Maybe some three out of five.
Okay. Three out of five. Yeah. You don't need super majority for.
So that is to give you a one-year extension on the existing as is, no major modifications. So I just want to make, I'm only saying that just so we're all clear. So we're trying to make it less confusing, cause I get it. It does get very confusing.
Staff would work with it. If there's any major modifications, then we'd have to either send him back to this board for a new application, but the use wouldn't be allowed or C Z. So we'll send the appropriate route.
Yeah. So if the, if, if the, uh, the design change that you end up starting to look. Yeah, so if the, if the, the design change that you end up starting to look at ends up being different, then would you go back through whatever approval process that is required for that?
I understand.
Yeah. Okay, so, three to one.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'll talk to you in a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, let me get back over here, so.
My engineer reviews every bit of that.
Use that one year as leverage.
Tell him six months.
The last thing in our old business, get back to the top, is, you know, we looked at text amendments, wording amendments, last month, and we went through.
Should.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Sorry, we're back up the full board again, sorry.
Full board, and we go back to legislative, I'm sorry.
You just blended in so well, I forgot.
Yeah.
My fault.
Sorry, Candy. So you remember last month at September, we worked through knock and form D's, steep slope, height, ADUs, and what else did I miss? It was five, wasn't it? Mount Village, Mount Village. So we, steep slope changes got adopted at council this past month. So those fines went into place, so we will keep you abreast of that. And then the other three, Mount Village, Height, and Knock and Form D's are going to town council in two weeks from tonight. So the last little piggy is accessory dwellings. And I know that there was a couple of concerns. One was, I think, Ms. Overbeck was concerned about water sewer, make sure they had sanitation and water supply to those. There's a couple of things. We do have a code section that's kind of old, but it's more about, you know, if you remember from some of the appeals, there's a lot of talk about, you gotta have sanitation facilities and water. Maria's practiced, she, anytime she gets a new dwelling unit, we're asking if they're not on sewer, I mean, if they got sewer, especially this part of Woodfin, about everybody's got sewer, but occasionally septic. But if they've got septic, we're asking for them to, like, do you have your authorization to construct? So we're asking that all the time. Also know that the county building office, they've got to know where the water's coming from out of your pipes, and they got to know where it's going to when it goes out of your pipes. So there's a little bit of a disconnect. Like, when the Woodfin zoning ordinance was instituted, it probably predates, you know, modern building codes. I mean, building codes have only been in this state since the 60s, I mean, which is not that long ago, really. And those are only the biggest counties. So a lot of local ordinances like Woodfin's will include something about provision of water and sewer disposal, just because they weren't doing that back in the day. They are definitely doing that now. They're asking for that. But. Maria, do you know the actual section in the code on the water sewer? Do you know that one offhand? She references it all the time.
So what do you have, like, Bonham County Board of Health takes care of that?
Yeah, if I'm on the health department, so if you're adding a bedroom onto your house, you technically need to go to the health department, because your septic system is sized on bedrooms.
Right.
And so if you've got a three-bedroom house and you're doing addition. Fifty-four thirty-six is the section. I'll, I can go over that in a minute. And then somebody, I mean, a lot of times people ask if they want to build a garage or a carport, and they tell us they have septic. We're like, you need to go see environmental health to make sure you're not on your tail lines, you're not in your repair area, because you have the septic tank, you have your tail lines, and then you have a repair area. And that's, there's a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle, and you got to make sure as a homeowner that you don't plop a carport.
Top of your drainage line.
No, top of your drinking line, or you're, there's so much clearance out of your wellhead itself. So there's a lot of jigsaw to that. And so we don't know all of that, but we usually as a backstop, we'll just say, have you checked with the health department? If anybody comes in about, so even with an A D U, a garage, a shed, we say that to people. Not something I said a lot in Nashville, because everything's on sewer and water, but.
Who comes out and marks those lines? Is it the health department?
Yeah, if they've got the permits for them. I mean, they, I mean, drought, you can kind of tell, because you've got to find where you're mowing, where you're not mowing. That's where I was growing up. We knew where it's.
Where it's pretty and green.
Where it's pretty and green, you had tail lines.
There's leach fields down here?
Yeah, there's, there's so many different types of systems.
Okay.
I've seen some that like do irrigation spray fields in places where the soil's real poor. You might have four or five acre tracts of land, because the soil's all clay. There's a place in Davie County, they called it Puddin' Ridge. They said, it's corn loss. So it was like walking in pudding when it was wet. That's what this.
Do we use sand mounds down here?
I have not seen them. Yeah, I haven't seen those here, but I've only worked in the western part of the state. I don't, Maria, I've done, told you more than I know about septic systems, okay? But we've been more shopped out to us, it's been more the S S D I. You remember the Soho Mountain, where they were running the drain fields through the trees to not disturb the land? They just kind of do a little bit of a small trench. They put like this little, small drip irrigation. So that's the new technology we're seeing in the mountains is that. It's subserv, S S D I, subsurface drip irrigation fields. So we're seeing that, and that's what they told us at the Soho Mountain C Z, to limit the amount of grading. I know I'm a whole run rabbit here. But that's, it is, there's just, the technology is just beyond what somebody, our professions get in. We just hear this anecdotally as people explain stuff to us. To say all that is like, I would say that we're aware of septic systems, and we're very cognizant of that, and we kind of know who's on septic, who's on sewer. People readily volunteer that to us when they come in. That's the one thing people do know, I'm on the well, or I'm on septic. They kind of know that about their property. But, I mean, it's, you should, you should know, but there's.
Pay a bill or not.
But you hope that people do know when they're putting stuff in. It's just, I think, it's something maybe even 25 years ago, people weren't as cognizant about being aware, but rules around septic system.
The concern I had that we talked about around, you know, an A D U on a piece of land that has a bunch of space, you know, whatever makes sense for that plot of land. I was thinking that, now that I look at what a two-acre, two-acre space is, that some of these things are that we're looking at. If it's two acres or more, I don't know. I think you put three on here, and that was the only thing I wanted.
Yeah, I. Yeah.
Let's expand this out, just see if I can.
So this is exactly what we talked about last week, and just in your updated version, correct, Ricky?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, the only thing I added, I'll just say this, I added just in response to. Is this little section right here?
Yeah, yeah, that's the part I'm talking about. I think two would be.
Yeah, so it's just, I just put three. Yeah, it's three. I just put three, just somewhere to start. It could be five, it could be two. But basically, what I'm saying, detached accessory structures, they must be located to side or rear of a primary unit in no closer to the street on lots less than two acres. And then the little I is just says that for lots equal or greater to two acres, you can be anywhere on the line. So.
Okay. I thought two would be plenty big and less restrictive than.
So you would like us to review this and approve this tonight?
That's the hope, yeah, we can take it. Was that, I think, if I recall, is that right, Chris?
I think we were all kind of in agreement with most of it. You were just gonna make those few little tweaks.
Yes, wanted to see it. Yes, wanted to see it. It was more about answering Glenda's, was really concerned about make sure that people, she wanted to make sure people are not building or getting too far front of, getting the cart for the horse on securing a builder and jumping out there and spending money without knowing about septic, and then your acreage on placement. I think that's the two items. That's all I remember. I mean, I'll be glad to make it two acres. We'll send that recommendation to council. I mean, obviously, we'll have a public hearing on that. They can go back to three or two or.
We're only sending our approval as just a recommendation.
Correct, yeah, you're taking.
And then they approve it.
Yeah, probably, but y'all did a lot of hard hammering, so I think we've got a much better ordinances out of y'all's feedback.
So on the borders, are any objections to moving three to two?
Does the board, does the council have the right to go ahead and move it back to three with that?
Yeah.
Have they been saying anything about it?
Correct, yeah, they.
It's not theory they should listen to that.
I would just say that the only thing about two acres is that, two acres isn't real big, but, oh, I just, I just worry about sometimes you have larger in-town lots, or if you're in steep slope, that might make me concerned, so. But there's always restrictive covenants in steeper areas. But, yeah, that's just saying, it's.
Yeah, with steep slope.
Two or three, yeah, make us good.
Okay, but are we really hard dead set against three?
I'm just looking at how big it is.
It was pretty big. It's y'all's pleasure. It's y'all's pleasure.
The reason that I was thinking of any of those sizes, size of that idea, is like, when you've got a piece of space like that, sometimes, you know, it doesn't make sense to put something over here based on the slope of the land or where the water is and so forth. It's a fun, which is what, which is what the restriction starts to, you know, not make sense. It's more of a, three or four, but one block, one by four. So if you took that as, that would make sense. That's not real.
And now I'll say. Wouldn't want a two-acre lot, if it's only 200 feet wide, to put a garage in the front.
Right.
So I want a three acres. Would be better. It's too big, because you're only talking 200.
I think he's got where you can't put something in the front anyway, right?
It applies for lots less than three acres. So if you're 2.999 or less, then the A D U has to be behind it, equal or behind.
Kind of like in three, that's the reason I'm bringing it up, because 200 foot wide isn't really that wide. And that, if it was a two by 400, you would need the requirements to put anywhere in line, correct?
Correct.
And then I'd be a little concerned about that.
So two by 400 is two acres?
Yeah, because 100 by.
They're not very many to spare.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's a little different down there.
They're all like.
Yeah, they're all like.
Yeah.
That's why I can't, yeah, I wasn't picturing it like.
Yeah.
It's unofficially, Larry would rather have two or three. I'm just gonna take an unofficial poll.
I don't have a problem with two, but if three benefits people more, I'm okay with that.
Two acres is more.
Two would benefit people more, it would be less restrictive.
Correct. Two would be less restrictive. That's what I was.
Two would be less restrictive, right?
Yeah, two's less restrictive.
Let's go with two then.
Okay. I think we want to change it to three for some reason, but I think, I think restrictive people more on that sort of space. It's gonna make people think.
And they're still gonna be looking at the plans to make sure that they work anyway.
Yeah, they have to, you know, the whatever sewers, that well placement that they have. Would you like to use your own eyes and read that?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, why not? Well, no.
There we go. Come on, I could even read the old one.
We're just trying to get, get it.
We're bringing group participation here.
I move to approve the proposed text amendment subject to the following additional conditions. We just moved that to two. And I find that it's reasonable in the public interest and is consistent with the town of Woodfin's comprehensive plan and meets the development needs of the community that they're required.
Provides additional clarity and predictability to development requirements, thereby supporting economic development and ensuring that the town's planning, zoning, and permitting processes facilitate sustained and positive development and supports the need of business and industry, preserves and enhances Woodfin's open space, natural environment, and community character.
I second.
That was all the motion, right? Everybody all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous vote?
Thank you.
It's good.
Ricky's hard work. Oh, no, 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 moving on.
And we got more that'll be coming. We got.
We're not done yet.
No, we're not done.
Where's my meeting here? October 3rd. So we switched E and F. We did F, we did E. Okay. Is there any other questions, concerns from the board? Ricky, Maria, anybody have any other concerns? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Next meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all so much.